Welcome to a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. If anybody would like an agenda, they are in the plastic sleeve out back. But before we go any farther, I'd ask you all to stand and please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and because it's just an exciting night, we have two new city councilors joining us, I would ask, before we go any farther, I need you guys to head up there and see Patty, and she's going to get you sworn in.
Could you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Laura Lessing.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a city councillor.
As a city councillor.
For the city of Waterville.
For the city of Waterville.
Thank you, congratulations.
Feel different? All right, next on the agenda, we will have the election of the council chair. So I guess I would ask somebody to make a motion for a nomination. Councillor.
I'd like to nominate Steve Soule for council chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, is there any other nominations? Okay, all those in favor of Steve Soule. I guess that's unanimous, congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Next is community notes. Community notes is a time where if anybody has something they would like to speak about, touch on, or discuss that is not already scheduled to be discussed tonight, now would be the time to do it. We just ask that you come to the podium and state your name, tell us who you are, where you live, and what you have to say. Is there anybody for community notes? Councillor.
I do have a couple things. One, I'm humbled to be here tonight, very honored to serve with all of you, and I look forward to this coming year and the next three years. The second piece I wanted to say was, I wanted to take a moment to say a few words about one of the finest teachers ever to walk the halls of Waterville High School, Mike Goslin, who sadly passed away just before the holidays. I had the honor of taking Mr. Goslin's physics class during my senior year at Waterville High School. Known for his quick-witted, deadpan humor, Mr. Goslin will be most widely remembered for his passion of science and physics, and sharing it with every student that he taught in his 30-plus years of service at Waterville High School. He was an upstanding citizen of the Central Maine area outside the teaching career, where he gave back by donating hours of his service to church, local homeless shelters, and as a civic leader. He was a loving father, husband, neighbor, and a friend to many. For me personally, Mr. Goslin's reach extended to my time as a student of the URC of Maine when I enrolled into two physics courses that were taught by one of his former students at Waterville, Dr. George Bernhardt. Some of Mr. Goslin's teaching styles and physics jokes were incorporated to regular course study, which made my college physics experience that much more enjoyable. There is no doubt that Mr. Goslin likely received a lot of prestigious awards through the years, though one accolade that he was not afraid to gloat about was that of being crowned as having Central Maine's ugliest tie back in 1999 by the Morning Sentinel. The July 1999 article is still available to read on the website he created many years ago for his high school physics classes, apphysics.net. He would hand ugly ties as awards for students for high test scores or for a good job on a project. A quote from Mr. Goslin in the article best summed up his warm personality: "A plain brown or plain blue tie doesn't say anything. If you can find something with a splash of color on what is otherwise a very dreary day, that to me at least makes it a little bit of a difference." I found it only fitting that his obituary included a request for attendees to wear ugly ties to his funeral. Tonight I wear this ugly tie straight from Mr. Goslin's collection in tribute to honor the life of a truly remarkable person. I'd like to extend my deepest condolences and prayers to Mr. Goslin's family, friends, and loved ones. He will be sorely missed but never forgotten. And at this time, I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember Mr. Goslin. Thank you.
Anybody else for community notes? Councillor.
I wanted to give some clarification to a speech that I made on business-friendly certification back in November. There was some miscommunication and misinterpretation of what I said. I looked back on my speech today of that meeting, and I found no credible anything in that speech where it put my proposal to reduce our tax mill rate over three years on the shoulders of the Mid-Maine Chamber of Commerce with CEO and President Kim Lindlaw. I know there's been some communication that has been done with some members of the council with her, and I would like to say that that's exactly what it was. Made a phone call to Kim Lindlaw today, we straightened that out. It was miscommunication and misinterpretation. I did lead the committee on business-friendly certification. I have a direct relationship with Denise Guile, Deputy Commissioner of the Maine Department of Economic Community Development. I have a lot of information that I shared between ourselves through email correspondence and phone calls. I also had a relationship with Senior Economic Advisor John Butera from the state of Maine to Governor Paul LePage. And I have a lot of knowledge of what is going on and what the vote was for the business-friendly certification process. I did go to City Manager Michael Roy within less than a week after the speech, and told him exactly that that was my proposal. It was not a proposal that was intended to be a part of the business-friendly certification, it was mine alone. The findings of fact from the department are real in saying that we do need to lower our tax mill rate in order to be reconsidered and certified. Those are the findings of fact. So my proposal to do slight decreases over a three-year proposal was my perpetual thinking of let's be proactive and let's try to get this done. We certainly live in a time where municipalities have got to be thinking about being more business-friendly. It is the catalyst and the long-term solution to our economic dilemma that we're in. With all the forces that have come from all certain directions, we can see businesses are closing, and we can see businesses are in trouble. As much as the positives that have been happening with the revitalization and the partnerships, the fact remains that there is still a stagnant economy out there. And I really feel, and I want to push for the council, to reconsider and reapply for this certification, because I think it's critical for us with a neighboring town of Fairfield that already has a certification, and us being really that town service center for us to be certified and business-friendly. With everything that's going on and with the drop in the mill rate that we've had already, I think it's just plain common sense for us to reconsider and reapply for this. Much of the information that I have corresponded with certain people say that it is going to be some work, but it won't be as much as it was when we initially started, because we can use a lot of the work and a lot of the written forms that we already have in place. Of course, this would be spearheaded by the Central Maine Growth Council with them taking the lead role on this and with the committee. So I just wanted to make that clarification for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Somebody else for community notes? All right, we'll move on to the approval of the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Next, we're on to unfinished business, Order 206, 2016.
Move to read by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
An order to amend the downtown traffic consultant contract.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Roll call, sorry.
Counselor Soule?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Lessing?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Duchesne?
Yes.
Two and seven, favor, zero, vote.
Next, Order 207, 2016.
Move to read by title only.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
An order providing for approval of marijuana.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? All right, any roll call?
Counselor Soule?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Lessing?
Yes.
Counselor Mayeux?
Yes.
Counselor Champagne?
Yes.
Counselor Duchesne?
Yes.
Two and seven, favor, zero, vote.
All right, next, we're moving on to new business, and I would like to ask the council to consider taking an item here out of order, and that is Ordinance 202017, adoption of marijuana moratorium. Our city solicitor is here just for that, and rather than have him sit through the rest of this stuff, we'd like to get him out the door and home if we can.
I need a motion to take 20-2017 first out of order.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. Ordinance 202017.
An ordinance providing for adoption of marijuana moratorium ordinance, enacted by the municipal council of the city of Waterville, acting as this law officer, as follows: An ordinance providing for a moratorium on retail for marijuana establishments towards the social clubs to be adopted as shown on the attached.
Move to adopt. A number of you had written to ask about the idea of a moratorium, so I decided to put it on the agenda so that it could be discussed. The ordinance you see in front of you was taken from the Maine Municipal Association's Model Ordinance. We trimmed it down a little bit, because the sample they gave us was like four pages long, so what you have is half that size, or two-thirds that size. And what it would provide is a six-month period in which to study the question better about, well, obviously, do you want to allow retail marijuana shops and commercial clubs, I mean marijuana clubs in the city or not, and if so, where? And the other point I wanted to make before I asked Bill to come up is that, of course, we have in existence today an ordinance that prohibits marijuana, these kind of things, in the downtown area. So that restriction, prohibition, will not change as a result of moratorium. I think I brought on that. Correct. Okay. And so this would be a six-month period in which we'll have time to, of course, better understand what's going to happen at the state level, too, and decide better on our own areas.
Mike, I didn't see in here where it said six months. Is there a reason why it was omitted from the actual coverage itself, or is it just implied that it's a six-month moratorium, or is that what the state allows?
The--
Oh, it's in the bigger one. Okay.
Yeah. And we're limited to six months, but we can add another six months on top of that. If at the end of six months, and we've made a good faith effort to get something, we don't have it yet, it can be extended.
Thank you, Mike.
I'm here to answer any questions that you might have regarding this proposed moratorium. And after six months, it can be renewed for another six months, if necessary. You'd have to show that some progress has been made in order toward regulations.
Does the, I'm sorry, does the moratorium, would the moratorium affect medical, the provisions for medical marijuana?
No. The two statutes exist independently of each other. So, Bill, the writing of the medical marijuana restriction that we have for downtown, that, after looking at it and through planning and through the six-month process, if we wanted to craft a similar prohibition to the downtown area for that particular recreational versus medical in similar fashion, in similar writing, in similar paraphrase, that would be permissible? Yes. You could also decide to prohibit what's called recreational marijuana usages, when I say usages, retail establishments and smoking rooms throughout the entire city if the council so wished. That would be legal. It would not affect medical marijuana, however. Regardless of what you do, at least at the state level, the possession and use of small amounts by an individual are legal. You cannot say it is illegal, at least under state law, you're not going to be able to say it is illegal to possess an ounce of marijuana. That goes into effect now, but the stores, smoking rooms, and so forth, they're going to undergo a fairly lengthy rule-creation process and probably further statutory amendment. What you're saying here is, if you adopt this proposed moratorium, that we're not going to have any retail establishments for recreational marijuana, we're not going to have any smoking rooms for recreational marijuana. Any such idea is put on hold while we have the time to study the issue.
But for right now, is it safe to say, I mean, that we're remaining neutral so that people don't get disturbed? We're not taking a stand one way or another, right? We're just putting this out for six months?
Correct.
During which time you'll have to take a stand.
Right. Or after six months, decide you need more time to take a stand, but you are obligated to get a renewal on the moratorium to show that you've been acting in good faith. You can't just sit on it for six months without doing anything.
So is it you, or is it Mike? Who is in charge of doing the research to decide what kind of work Waterville would do?
Well, I think the discussion that we had was really, because this was somewhat already being propelled into the planning board, and the conversation went to, really, the council needs to have some kind of meeting, some kind of public discussion, because really, the council needs to decide which direction you're going first. That way, does it go to the planning board, or are you just going to pass a ban? Once the council decides which direction it's going to, then--
So there'll be some sort of public meeting, you think?
Yeah, we'll have to schedule something, or it could be, I suppose it could be at a council meeting, we could set aside time to discuss that. Because really, you're the policymakers.
Did you recommend to the planning board that there be a work session?
It really shouldn't go to the planning board.
No, no, no. Before, when it came up to, when the medical marijuana discussion was being had about that ordinance, there was a recommendation that there be a work session.
Well, by city ordinance, when there's a proposal to have a zoning regulation, it must go to the planning board first for a recommendation. The planning board has wide discretion in how it wishes to conduct a review process. I mean, it can have a public hearing, it can send representatives from the planning board to other municipalities to talk to people regarding such regulations. My only recommendation was that indeed it had to go to the planning board for a recommendation before we'd come back to the council. I can say that from the planning board meeting that I, it might have been two meetings, that I attended on that subject, I think that the planning board would very much like to receive some direction from the council before it starts debating or discussing the matter. Because if you just say, well, to the planning board, take a look at this recreational marijuana subject and let us know how it should be regulated, the planning board's going to say, well, does the council even want to regulate? What sort of regulations does it have in mind? And then it'll be, and if you can give the planning board some general sense of direction, then it can start looking at the fine points of such regulation, but it will need some type of direction from you when you get to that point. Right now, of course, and as you just pointed out, councillor, you're not bypassing this, you're not saying we're in favor of this, we're not saying we're opposed to it, we're saying we need more time to determine whether we should regulate it at all, and if so, how much we should regulate. And of course, it's possible that at the federal level, that the incoming administration may choose to crack down on recreational marijuana, and if so, that would probably put an end to the whole subject at the state level. Currently, there is, at least in the medical marijuana field, the federal government has chosen not to intercede. And I don't think the federal government's going to intercede in medical marijuana anyways. I think it exists in a majority of the states at the present time, but in terms of recreational marijuana, it's possible that the new administration may take the view that since this is prohibited under federal law, the states better not touch it. That remains to be seen. But again, passing this moratorium does not take a positive or a negative view on the subject, it just says, we need more time to think about this, because it's complicated. And it is quite complicated.
Could you come up to the podium and tell us your name?
Julian Payne, Ward 5. Oh, I mean, Nick Champagne, sorry. My understanding is that Colorado was the first state in the U.S. to legalize marijuana, and I'm wondering if the city has thought of, via Skype or workshops, reaching out to mayors of Colorado and councilors and law enforcement to get guidance on how to handle this complicated issue, the pros and cons they had with it coming into play, and what they would have done differently, and just reach out to officials in the state that have firsthand experience on these complicated issues. The only concern I see is with all the surrounding towns like Fairfield, Sidney, and Winslow, if they jump on the bandwagon first, then residents and people who want to purchase that will be going to those towns to get their supplies, and you might be left in the dust. So, you know, someone's going to provide the service for people. It's pretty complicated with all the surrounding towns, that people might choose to go there to fulfill those needs. So I think there's a lot of issues, but definitely Colorado's been surviving and seems to be, have done quite well out of it. So maybe there's any officials or workshops there that can guide the community through this, I'm not sure. Thank you.
I think part of the discussion that this council will probably have is whether that's a good or a bad thing, that people would go somewhere else for that service. But it's a good suggestion to make somebody else.
Is there any other questions anybody has on this? All right, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? All in favor? Thank you, Bill. Next, Resolution 152017.
Move to--
What?
Sorry.
Okay. A resolution providing for appointing citizens to various boards and committees. Here results of the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers and scholars, whereas citizens have been solicited to submit applications of interest to fill seats on various boards and committees, and whereas the Air Airport has conducted interviews with all applicants, now therefore it resolves that citizens are appointed to fill vacant seats on various board committees as detailed on the attached letter.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And we will ask everybody--
I'll help you pull out, don't lie, so I can see who's here, who isn't.
That is fantastic.
Thank you.
Phil Bofio for the Airport Advisory Committee.
Come on right up.
Just come stand in front of and face the audience, please. Brad Fisher, Airport Advisory. Zachary Bigford for the Board of Assessment Review, and also the Board of Zoning Appeals. Stephen Crete for the Board of Zoning Appeals. Joe Ferris, Board of Zoning Appeals. Stephen Crete is also the Ethics Committee, and Joe Ferris. Daniel Veyou for the Ethics Committee. Peggy Susi for Haynes Charity Relief. Joe Ferris is also Kennebec Regional Development Authority. Jessica Liberty for the Planning Board. Lauren LePage for the Planning Board. Eddie Brown for the Public Library Trustees. Stephen Crete is also a Public Library Trustee, and I think that's it. So if I could ask you, please, to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Laura Lessing.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a member of the committee.
As a member of the committee.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
Thank you, congratulations.
I'd just like to personally thank everybody that volunteered. This was the first year we actually had less applicants than we had seats, and you can say that's why you're going to see a lot of people signed up for multiple things, and it's time out of your day, it's time away from your families, so thank you very much for your service.
And we'll wait for Patty. You got a new deadline? Next is Resolution 162016.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
A resolution providing for issuance of a special amusement license to NTL and cooperating doing business as shape-reader.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Next is Resolution 172017.
Move to read by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
A resolution providing for issuance of a special amusement license to DFW Forest Jake Air Post 1285, doing business as VSW Forest Jake Air Post Post 1285.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next, Order 182017.
An order providing for sale of city property, Gold Street Vacant Lot. Being hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers, as follows: As the city manager, he authorized to sell the vacant lot located at 26 Gold Street in the amount of $1,000 to Anthony Green. He had further ordered that all the proceeds from this sale be applied to the outstanding amount due to property taxes, interest, deeds, et cetera.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? And Order 192017.
An order providing for sale of city property via rescue apparatus. Being hereby ordered by the city council of the city of Waterville, acting as municipal officers, as follows: That authorization be provided to Frank T. Green, the founder to sell the city's 2003 rescue truck in the amount of $30,000 to the town of Mars Hill name, according to the terms and conditions as provided for in the attached memorandum.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Hey, Chief, you want to get us run down?
I believe the information was provided for the fire tech company to post this on the internet. We ended up getting a very good deal, I think, with Mars Hill, so today. Couple towns were interested before we went online. I think they wanted us to give them the trucks. I honestly expected about $20,000, but I think getting $30,000, it cost us $3,000 to the internet company, but $30,000 price tag, I think, is great.
Good. Fantastic. Any other questions? All those in favor? Manager's report. Oh! We're there already. We are.
Two things, and I wanted to update the council on. One, the Ethics Committee is still doing their thing. They are meeting again in the next two weeks, and I'll make sure that all of you get a notice and anyone else that wants to know when the next meeting is of the Ethics Committee. They're preparing an ordinance. Remember, our charter required that an ordinance be developed and presented to the council at some point, so they're getting close to finalizing that. The chairman of the committee met with Bill Lee and myself last week, and went over some of the concerns that Bill had. We also met this morning. Councillor Mayeux, and I know Mr. Mayeux, and Mr. Payne joined us this morning. Some of their comments on the ordinance, which will go to the committee, and I wanted the council just to understand that the timing of this will probably take us into March, because Bill, who's now left and who's leaving at the end of this week for Florida, won't be back until March 1st. So we really thought it would be best-- So we really thought it would be best for that ordinance to be presented to you at the beginning of March, first meeting in March, when Bill is back and we can have a discussion at that time on it. And certainly, the Ethics Committee in the meantime will continue looking at it and hold, they probably also will hold a public meeting on the ordinance that stands when they get done with it. So are there any questions about that process? People okay, then we're going to shoot for the first council meeting in March, which I think is a step ahead. The last item is, our search for a finance director has been very, very difficult. We advertised and got some applications, interviewed some people, none of them worked out. And so we're in our second round of advertising. We had two interviews today, we have one tomorrow morning. From what we've seen so far in the two interviews today, the candidates in this second round of interviews are stronger than what we had initially. So that's good news. You know, we're hoping we can find someone within the next couple of weeks because very soon budget season starts. So with that in mind, I've decided to keep Chuck Cawkins on as a per-hour finance director to help us just close monthly reports and get the budget sheets ready so that when I come to you with a budget, at least I haven't had to train a person entirely new on our system. So Chuck will be helping us through the meantime, but we're continuing to work hard to find his replacement. Those were the only two.
I just had a question unrelated to the two items you're talking about.
I'm done.
Had a constituent ask me about the old light up at the airport road. And I apologize, Mike, I'm not putting your feet to your fire, but, just curious, is there any timeline on that?
On the what?
On the new, new light at the airport road?
Oh, yeah.
Traffic light. Yeah. I know it's been a headache over the past few months and I was...
Brought up one of the biggest sources of our frustration.
By my house, Sidney, can you take your...
The new traffic signal.
Yes.
Airport Road, KMD.
Yes.
I mean, we've been after and after and after the contractor. Unfortunately, because of the control system and that traffic signal being proprietary, there's basically only one contractor that can do the job. And so we've already awarded him the contract, we've been after him. It was just last Friday, I know I communicated with Chris Gons of Central Maine Motors when he asked me about it, and I asked our public works guy to get in touch with AD Electric. So I'm hoping it's done soon, but I've said that so many times already and I've been proven wrong.
Yeah, you did say...
Good thing Amy's not here to quote me.
Before the snow flies.
Yeah, before the snow flies is one of my... Has that happened yet?
A little bit on the ground, I guess.
So we're working on it, and I wish I could tell you something more.
I was just curious.
Have we, but?
He doesn't have the timeframe that he needs to do the job.
Well, he told us September. The contractor installing the traffic signal told us September. So we're...
I guess if you're the only person in the state that can install a light, you can do, make your own schedule.
Yeah. And this is a result of, which was a very, very good thing, well, the state of Maine paid for all of our upgrades for our traffic signals throughout the city, so they're synchronized, they're all the same, and that was a, I wish I had marked here to help me remember, but $1.5 million project. But the one problem with that was the proprietary nature of the controller unit inside the traffic light, and that controller unit is, Kennedy can only buy it from one source. And so AD Electric happens to be the distributor for that. So we've talked about buying another type of controller piece to put in the signal, but worried that it would not jive with, because the signals have to be coordinated. So if you start at OpaShone and you come down Kennedy Memorial Drive, you want to hit green, 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 all the way to Giffords. Right? That's the goal. And it's been so much better since they did their work, but, and now we're going to have another light in that, you know, you're going to be stopping at McDonald's and then you're going to be stopping at the airport road, about 50 yards up the road. People aren't going to like it, but you can't get out of the airport road now. If you're going to turn left again.
Julian, do you have a question about that?
Every single candidate fails for this finance committee job. Give me a call, I'll do it for half price.
Okay. Wouldn't that be a conflict?
It would.
Any other questions? Seems like I'm forgetting something, but we meet again in two weeks. We'll keep moving forward. Still waiting regarding the sale of the lot in the concourse with Kobe, the site for the proposed moratorium. We're still waiting for a final, I say final, at least a proposal from Kobe that we can evaluate, so we haven't received that yet, but it's close to coming. Before the snow flies. Mike, you want to...
My Easter.
I know that you emailed the councils about the Riverwalk, but I don't know if the audience all knows. The state has asked us to be quiet about the fact that we're in line to receive a grant for the Riverwalk project on the river. But it's only one step in a two-step process, the second step. Now the state has approved it as a national park service. So I feel a little comfortable saying this without Amy here because the state has said, don't advertise your grant award without knowing that the National Park Service will also approve it, because it's actually National Park Service money that comes to the state. The state makes the first decision and it has to be ratified by National Park Service. So next step is National Park Service, but it looks very good. Okay, thank you. Yeah, we're excited about that.
Want to know, Jaren?